Adrian Anne Brightfelder, City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a special session of the City Council to be held on Wednesday, February 9, 2022, at 6:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting such business that may properly come before the City Council.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a special session of the Dubuque City Council for February 9, 2022. As a reminder to viewers and listeners, due to the nature of tonight's meeting topic, public input is not accepted. However, you may contact the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts. Attendance for the session is as follows. Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Council members Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Rousell.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you. I will turn it over to Leisure Services Manager Marie Ware.
Thank you, Adrian. Hi, I'm Marie Ware. I'm the Leisure Services Manager for the City of Dubuque and happy to be here with you this evening. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for giving me the opportunity to be able to share, kind of walk backwards to be able to bring us forward to today. In order to really talk about the Five Flags Civic Center, it really will help us to kind of go through all the steps because we were just joking in the back that we all kind of have this perspective of what happened before COVID and after COVID, right? And during this interim. So it is helpful to be able to review this. Tonight, I'm going to focus on the Civic Center studies and review them as a real overall overview and what are the different prior actions that happened because you almost have to understand and remember the steps that we went through to get to the different decisions that were made or what the next steps were. So in an overview, the City Council decided to delay the vote for the referendum and they said that at the time that they would wait until and tabled this issue until January 18 of 2022. So that's why we're here today. So like I say, tonight is a high-level presentation. There's a lot of information that I provided as a part of your packet, which you probably were like, oh, my gosh. The consultant, he shared with me, it's over 800 pages. I never totaled it up, but it is a lot of information, but that's obviously very important because this is an important topic to be able to know and understand what went on. And I figured this would be the easiest way to give you all, like, all the background in one place because otherwise you'd have to go to this meeting and that meeting and a lot of other things to pull that all together. So that also allows the citizens to have access to that same information, which they do through your website, but this is now all in one place. So tonight, I want to be able to go through the actions of the City Council as well as the Civic Center Commission because there, you're appointed board to be able to really look over anything related to the Civic Center and bring forward recommendations. Because this effort started early and before the pandemic, that's why we'll have a lot of different topics we'll cover tonight. We'll cover the Phase 1 study, which was done in 1718. We'll look at the Phase 2 study, which took a deeper analysis into one of the scenarios, and that was done in late 2018. And then we did a second, a two-way planning because part of that was to look at analysis of can we lower some costs as well as to go a little bit deeper and compare several scenarios so that you would have a lot of good information to make decisions upon. And so then the other piece, like I say, that we'll go over is the City Council actions. So as I said, the Civic Center Commission has been highly involved in this from day one. They were involved even before because they were the ones saying to you through their input into your council goal setting, even before, we need to start looking at the Civic Center. And so they've been very active in anything from the citizen input sessions to planning meetings. They've come to your council meetings. They've previewed the studies before you've seen them. They've asked a lot of questions and really dug in deep. They also, very honestly, I can tell you, they're one of the commissions that really goes out and talks to people about what's going on. And so I'd like to thank them. Tonight, we have Tyler Doherty, who's the chair here tonight. So if you do have questions for the commission, he's here to be able to answer your questions. We've also had Rod Baki, who's, he's the vice chair, and he's been on the Civic Center Commission for many, many years and brings a wealth of history to what we've been doing. Mackenzie Blau, Bryce Parks, and Brenda Christner is your newest appointee. I'd also like to recognize, because ASM Global has been involved in this also from day one and has provided a lot of support between H.R. Cook as general manager and his staff throughout this process, they have provided a lot of, in the information, the data, tours of the facility, building specifications, financials for operating, and more. Additionally, online and virtually tonight, we have here with us Bill Krueger, who is the principal for CSL International and the person that helped us with all these studies. So if you end up having questions that you'd like to ask him, he's also available and here with us virtually. So to step back and just think about the history of Five Flags Civic Center, there was a bond referendum that was on August 17 of 1976, and that was to be able to talk about and to construct the Civic Center. That bond issue passed. At that point in time, it was 3.7 million. That was the amount of that bond. And then the Civic Center was built and opened in 1979. Then the most, there was only one major renovation that was done in between '79 when it opened and now, and that was a $2 million renovation that was done in 2005. And then the City Council then decided, as a part of their goal-setting session, that the Five Flags Civic Center and studying the center would be a high priority from 2016 to 2018. And as I was reflecting upon these dates, one of the things I thought was quite interesting, and I hadn't really thought about it till I put this presentation together, is if you think about when that first original bond referendum was done, that was done when Dubuque was not necessarily at its strongest because that was right as the '80s were starting to turn the corner. And it was also at a time when Dubuque was looking to revitalize its downtown, to be able to try and help the vibrancy of this particular area. And so that's the general timeframe that this was done. And so it's not dissimilar really to right now because we're kind of in an interesting timeframe as well with all the things that have happened in our world and locally. I thought additionally, it's important to point out from a historical perspective and as a part of this, that as you very well know, Imagine Dubuque was our input into the comprehensive plan of what we as a community want to move forward on in the future. So in the Imagine Dubuque 2037 Call to Action, which was completed in 2017, there was a Community Facilities section where it talked about that implementation of future plans for Five Flags based upon the assessment and study to better showcase this downtown venue was called out. And then in several other places through the Imagine Dubuque document, Five Flags is referenced. So how did this work all start? So what we did is after your City Council, you made this a top priority, then you need to have someone, a firm, help you with a study and assessment in order to begin the process. So a staff we put out, an RFP, was issued, and the topics that are listed here are the things that we asked the consultant to look at. Looking at the current status of the facility, a review of the local market conditions, what's happening here, the visitor industry, what's happening as a part of that, what are industry trends from the types of facility that we have, looking competitively and comparably across different facilities, studying the idea of an expansion and an assessment of that as a part of it. We wanted some conceptual renderings because obviously that helps picture for people what might be possible out of some scenarios that might be possibilities, creating some preliminary costs because obviously that's what's always important to people is understanding. And then some economic impact as well as looking at, are there naming rights, sponsorships, and other things? Not an all-inclusive list, but overall, that's what we were to look at right in the beginning. Base information that would be necessary to start making decisions if you so desired to do that as a council. The consultant that was selected, it was a consultant team, so Convention, Sports, and Leisure was the main consultant. They also had Betch Associates, which is an architectural firm, and FEH as a local engineering firm to assist with their study as they went along. That first phase was a very important phase for us because it did those things that the other slides said, but it also had a lot of outreach that was a part of it. We asked for some pretty hefty engagement, as we always do as a city, about what our citizens are thinking. And so one of the pieces of it was there was a community survey, and you see there, 1,087 people responded. And if you look in the study, Appendix C has verbatim what everybody said. So there's no edits to it. We didn't change typos. We didn't change anything about it. If they gave us that input, that's what Appendix C is. So you can see those responses. Additionally, we felt really good about the survey because when we worked with CSL, they reported that in other places that have done these studies, typically they might get 500 to 700 responses and for any kind of a similar study to what we did. And so this shows that people really wanted to participate and a lot of input was received via this method. And that survey was widely distributed and a lot of social media to promote doing it and things like that because we wanted to make sure we had the most input from people. We also had some in-person interviews, phone interviews, and as you see there, there were a lot of different people that were a part of this process. And then we also had specific meetings with The Chamber, Main Street, Greater Dubuque Development Corporation, Travel Dubuque, and we also had specific meetings with our arts and culture organizations like the Dubuque Symphony, Fly by Night as an acting company, and many other groups that are arts and culture because we know the connection of the arts organizations to Five Flags Civic Center for especially the performing arts as well as obviously the musical talent that comes through the facility. So all of these things were studied and analyzed as a part of this facility. So the key findings out of the first phase of the study were as follows, and they're very important because they really built kind of a basis as we moved forward. The people said, this is a community asset. It's an important community asset. It's served us in this long time that you saw, since the late '70s. The finding was that the quality of life would be negatively impacted without facilities serving in these roles, anywhere between the theater as well as the arena. Very importantly, people said, no matter what, that theater should be protected. That's a very important asset to us and it's a very important asset to this community. The arena was found to be, it had what they call exceeded practical life and its functionality. And what you have to think about is if you think about in the late '70s, early '80s, if you had performances and venues, just think about those performances for those that might have even gone to those performances at that age, right? And how it's changed, how the performers have changed, the stage, the show, the lights, all the different things that it takes to do what you do to put shows and events within facilities have changed a great deal. And because of that, also its marketability is a little bit more difficult because it is an older arena designed in the '80s versus the kinds of amenities that are built into facilities now. The demand exists to protect and grow the business if you put in investment. So there is a demand for doing additional things there, additional events, activities, or being able to put new things in there that maybe aren't in there at the current time. It was after, as a part of the study, the finding was that the highest and best use is as a multipurpose event complex. And part of that was, is it compared, what are the other things within our community that either do or don't have the opportunity to do the same kinds of things that happen at Five Flags? And so that multipurpose event complex is a really important and highest and best use for that. Also, it was identified, as I said, they were supposed to come up with four scenarios. One of them was a status quo. One of them was a limited renovation. One of them was a theater renovation with an arena expansion, and then the other one ended up as a theater renovation and a new arena. So it took you anywhere from the simplest fix that you might think of to an overall restart. So the scenario one and two, with scenario one, as it was, it was a status quo project that would have addressed deferred maintenance. It's, it has an upfront cost of about $4.7 million, but if you also looked at the one-to-five-year capital investments that would have to continue to happen, that added another $8.7 million that you'd have to spend as you went along. The other part of it is, is that the operating deficit obviously is different whether you upscale or not. And so the operating deficit in the $2,018, which was that time, was about $856,000. And so that, that has to be taken into account because that's an ongoing every-year property tax dollar figure. The scenario two then looked at deferred maintenance with a limited renovation. And so that was a project where it had also a lower dollar cost value, but that 15-year total would be $12.8 million, so it would be a lot more expensive. And the, let's see, it also, each of these had the same seating that was done, and then the operating deficit for that scenario two, if you just did a limited renovation, dropped that cost from $856,000 to $811,000. So you saw a small operating decrease, but not a great deal. Scenario three was the deferred maintenance and the theater renovation. And these were, this was an early drawing because the other part that people kind of wanted to see, and it also helps you to visualize, it's like what would need to happen to a building and how might that look? And so that's why you see the picture that's on the side there. It had the, an expansion, so it had 4,600 seating as a part of it, four private suites, so starting to upscale it a little bit. It had an upfront cost of $46.1 million. So as you see, as we go along, obviously each one, as you do a little bit more, costs a little bit more as you go. That operating deficit was $661,000, so obviously a little bit lower because you have more of an improved area that's more built around revenue production. Then scenario four that was studied during this, this had a 6,000-seat capacity. As you see, it goes further, it goes over Fifth Street, and then goes further and closer to Ecumenical Towers. So if you think of that, you think of that parking lot that's across the street, across Fifth Street, it would go into that area and run, and not run into Ecumenical Towers. We always built around Ecumenical Towers in each one of the scenarios. It would have eight private suites and two party suites. Of course, the upfront cost went up because, and that's a $68.5 million project to be able to build this, but obviously your capital costs would go down because you would have a newer facility. So in that first 15 years, your capital costs would go down. The operating deficit over the year would go down to $471,000. And so as you see, as we go along, each of those, because newer facilities are built around revenue production, your concessions are built differently, you have more space, you have more opportunities, as well as the way the setup is, it makes it more efficient for staff to be able to do what they do in the back of house to prep and move shows in and out and numerous other items. So all of this study was presented as City Council Work Session in May of 18. The Civic Center Commission, so at first it was just a work session, it's like, here's all the information. The Civic Center Commission had already reviewed it, and so at their June meeting, they recommended the City Council consider scenario four based upon all the facts. And so their letter is within your packet. In July of 18, then the City Council voted to receive and file. So when you received and filed, you didn't give us any, like, this is what we want to do, you just said, okay, we've heard that. So then in July, or August, excuse me, so just a month later, was your City Council Goal Setting Session. And during that time, that's where you spent some time talking about, what do we do here? So you adopted and continued, this is a City Council priority, and then you said during that discussion, we'd like to see a little more focus on scenario four, but yet still discuss these others some. And so we re-engaged CLS International, or CSL, sorry, International to be able to do a Phase 2 study, diving deeper into four, but also with those other scenarios, going into them more. So any questions that people had, other things we needed to look at, that's what we did. So the scenario four focus, as I said, was a 6,000-seat arena with a renovated theater. Part of that digging in deeper was to investigate deeper into the programmatic and the architectural detail. What would this look like? As you saw, we just kind of had a general drawing before, but also what we heard from a lot of people is, you're putting this in historic downtown, we want it to be something that fits in and really kind of looks like it belongs there as well as works very well. And so there were refinements to that, there were refinements to the financial cost estimates and the construction costs because before, the first one was overall square footage use of, here's this square footage, here's so much per square foot, that's how they got the rounded numbers. This got more into detail of looking at more specific construction costs. They updated the evaluation of cost benefits of the different options that we had, and then they also looked at different funding options. Is there anything else? Because we're always looking at, is there anything else to help us to be able to lower those impacts? And then there were several more topics that they looked at, as you can see. And also, we refined those program elements, like I said. So throughout this thing, this slide shows those refined program elements where we really kind of honed in on what are the types of things? We had a lot of conversations about what are the types of things that you build into a new facility that can do that revenue production? Premium seating, club seats, loge boxes, private suites, club lounge, what are the right things for Dubuque, right? So there's all kinds of options, but what are the types of things that would go well for us and also make an enhanced facility for the patrons that come to them? We talked a lot about ADA access. Obviously, we have an '80s building. It was not built with the accessibility of today in mind. And so the staff can tell you about the accessibility issues that it has, and there's a lot of them. As we know, people come now to expect the technology as well. When they come into a building, they want Wi-Fi and they want it to be fast, and they want to be able to send their Instagrams and all the other things out, snap, I'm probably like way behind the times, there's probably a new thing, TikTok, there we go. You know, they want to be able to send out whatever it is they're experiencing in the facility, so that technology is really important. Very important too is, like I said, that backstage, what happens in the support facilities, making sure that we have that. And then the rigging, be able to put, if you've been to a show recently, it's lights and it's fog and it's all kinds of different things, and all that gets hung up in the ceiling. And so you have to have all the right things to make all that work for the experience that people expect when they come to an entertainment venue. The theater was also an important piece of this, and one of the pieces that a lot of people talked about is being able to have an elevator that could get you into the balconies. Right now, you can only, from an accessibility standpoint, it's only that first level that you can get to. You really don't have what you need to be able to access the, because it's a historic theater. It really wasn't built for that standard. Patrons have also come to expect things like their restroom facilities to be much more updated. If you think about facilities you go in now, it used to be these little tiny stalls we all go in, and that's what we have at Five Flags Civic Center, but there's lots more open space. There's family restrooms. There's other things that are needed when it comes to that support that people expect. So all of that becomes a part of not just the theater, but also the arena. So those were all very, very important steps for us. The planning, of course, took into account, as I said, of there's the existing Five Flags Civic Center, there's Fifth Street, and then the project site really coming across Fifth Street and closing that off. So when we looked at it, this was the newer arena design that was put forth to be able to fit more into that downtown, being able to have kind of the towers and kind of a roof. If you think about what is in our downtown area, you see that. They dug more into the specifics in this scenario and honed in on the costs. And as this developed, that became an $84.8 million project. Well, as you can see, as you go along, all of these things do cost money. There's escalation of, you know, whatever the inflation or CPI is as we go along and continue, but also as you really look at, when you start to determine what specifics you need to build, obviously that has an effect on what that is. But the other side of that is, is when you start building in this sort of a neighborhood, the, each year, what we would be paying in the property taxes in a deficit for the budget then came down to $305,000 approximately. All these are approximate figures. So, so what you can see is that as you start to look at it, there's this question of where do you invest in? Do you invest in it in this side of it or in this side of it? And so that's something that has to be determined. As you can see, it created a really nice way to be able to have an entrance that's on what I call the north, I don't know if it's true north, but the downtown towards a clock tower direction. So it would also create another entrance to the building. So right now, of course, there's the two entrances on, on the sides there that go into the concourse, but this would create another major entrance that goes into the facility. And when you think about venues that you visit now, this is more kind of the style that you see. When you come into venues, there's space, there's lots of gathering, you meet people, and you find wherever you're going. Lots of signage to get you there, lighting and all the different things, as well as a lot of ways to move a lot of people in and out as quickly as possible. And so that's real important as well as, just off to the right-hand side there, that would be where the elevators are. So not just one little tiny elevator like we have, but a bank to be able to move people up and down quickly in the facility. Being able to have large concourses, so again, you can move people very quickly, whether it's during the intermissions or whether it's an entrance or an exit from the facility, they become areas to be able to showcase art and things like that. So it becomes more of a gathering space. And then also within the planning, that also helps you to plan out that arena and what that is. And so as you see here, this is the U-shaped arena that was designed in. And then off to the sides, you'll see the different private suites and boxes that are also a part of that. And then you have the opportunities to have these gathering spaces or where your concessions are, to be able to also have areas that people gather. Those are the types of things that help you with your revenue production within the facility. And this is just a picture of the theater lobby where you can see you would have that elevator to be able to go up and down. So you would reuse these areas that we use now as a concourse to get you into the arena and be able to do a number of things that are support to the arts in the theater area. An important aspect of this was also the Phase 2 planning was parking. We addressed it in the first plan, but there were additional questions that were asked. And so we dove a little deeper within the study about parking. And so what we found is that particularly, you see the red triangles, those would be the new entrances. So you'd have the two that we have now and then the one I just described. And then it doesn't show up real good here, but I'm sure on your screen And then it doesn't show up real good here, but I'm sure on your screen it does better, there's all the little boxes that say how many parking spaces are close by. So you can see how many of them are in that two-block radius. And then within this parking analysis, we also worked with our Parking Division, and they helped us showcase other areas too, that are still not only within a two-block radius, which is actually very close. If you think about bigger venues that you go to, you usually walk way more than two blocks. Usually, I call it the back forty, you know, you park in the back forty, and you gotta walk all the way up. The nice thing that we have here is a part of this location, one of the pieces of this location is that typically, when you do a project like this, if you're starting, you have to build all the parking. This is where it shows that the parking is there, so there's not a cost to the parking associated with the project, otherwise a project would cost more. What this also shows is that they're within, how much, how much of that parking is within a walking distance, and how much is within two blocks? The chart up above shows that, on average, they showcased some different facilities across the country, what size and seating capacity that was, and what the parking needs are. And so when you look at that, we are more than covered with the parking that we have within our downtown area, to be able to service this, this new venture. The other piece, as I said, we were going to look at closing Fifth Street, because obviously, in order to build across the street, you have to close it, and so it was important to do a traffic impact study, and so one of our pieces that we did, just to make sure and to see what the impact is if we close off that street. And so that's well documented, and, and is within your documents that you had. So as we finish this up, this Phase Two, the City Council, again, received and filed this information, so, yep, we got it, thanks, appreciate what you did. And then through the discussion, then, in May of twenty nineteen, then moved forward to be able to approve a commencement of a Phase, what we call Two A. So we took what was in that Phase Two, and there were specific elements you asked to dive deeper into. And the scenario focus for that Phase Two A was a Scenario Three, which was the renovated expanded, and a Scenario Four Hybrid was another one. In other words, could we do anything that would still provide a really good facility, but at a little less cost than over eighty million dollars? And so what we did is, we kind of looked at that and said, how can we still do what we want to do, and still, and, and still provide the types of things, once again, going back to what people asked for and what was talked about in the first study, still provide that as we go along? And so within there, we wanted to have further refinements of those estimates, we wanted to compare the two, excuse me. All right, we wanted to be able to compare those two, as well as compare Scenario Three to Scenario Four, and Four to Four Hybrid, so that you could see what that difference, what did you gain, what did you lose? And so that was a very, very important thing. We had, and up, let's see, oh, and also, important to this was, when we go in this, is there any fatal flaws? As we dig deeper, is there something about one of these scenarios that really becomes, you know, difficult? Thank you. And makes it so that it's not as good of a, a scenario for us in some specific way. So we did this comparison, and what you see is, like I said, we compared Three to Four, you'll see that we compared from poor, poor performance, so that's a small dot, adequate or excellent. So it doesn't say one's better than another, it's just a comparison. So in other words, you could look at it as, what's important to me? So you could look at it and say, there's seating capacity, it's a lower seating capacity, a higher seating capacity? You can look at it, that it has this many suites, and I noticed today, so my apologies, you should have caught this before, it says a twelve-man suite, and it should have been a twelve-person suite, so my apologies there. But it also has things like, you know, the, the backstage access, what's good about that or not, operating costs, and making that comparison, and then overall project costs. So that was a comparison of Three to Four, and then Four to Four Hybrid. So what we were trying to do is to see if we could come up with something as a Hybrid and Four, that would still have excellent performance, but yet be able to take care of the cost. And so as we went through and looked at, how do we do that, and came up with this new Scenario Four Hybrid, that's what we were trying to do, is make sure exactly what happened there, that the only thing that we were really doing is getting it so that we could have a lower-cost perspective. Now, it's still a high cost, right? So I recognize that, but in a comparison, that's what we're talking about. So this Two A study, like I said, this, we didn't change this picture, so this outside, we didn't redo, because we said, that's a general, and you can change the inside, and you would just change it a little bit. So you'll see that that's the same picture, what really changed was what was inside of it. And so you'll see within the layout, and it's kind of smaller up on the screen, because obviously this is a pretty big drawing, but the things you have to consider are many when you do something like this. You'll see kind of at the top, that angled rectangular bars, those would be the semis that have to come in and be able to park. So we had to figure out where that loading/unloading zone would be, and make sure that worked within the street. We had a lot of meetings with engineering, and a lot of people within the city about making sure that all those sewer and water and connections and those things that cost, that we're considering that with this facility. There's a lot of back-of-the-house spaces, and so you look at it, and you see that there's sound rooms and black box rooms, and different things that are within that. You'll see there's concessions, and they're scattered in different places, but there's also like a backup kitchen in a space, and there's a number of support facilities, as well as offices that would take to run this. You'll see on the theater side, there's also things that are about, what would we do? So like, if you think about right now, if you move the offices into the new area, then you can renovate where the offices currently sit. So if you know where that's at, that's by that concession stand down, on the concourse there, that could then be reused. And so the opportunity to have additional space for, that would support the theater and support the arts and different performing arts, is a great potential within this new scenario. We also had, obviously, you're looking at how many seats you can get in within that major U, you've got a second floor, that's what this level is. We looked at from the top, and you can see like in the building design, we tried to make sure that it wasn't like you had all the HVAC, and it just looked awful, and that upon the top of your building, so we wanted to make it a really nice facility in that And then it also has that upper seating, so the one thing that that provides is being able, as you know, some people really like the, to be way up top, but some people do it because that's a cheaper ticket, I can afford that, that's the way I get to go. We all make those decisions based on our budget, and so having those layers allows us to be able to have those options as well. And then because the theater has a basement to it, and if you've ever been down there, it's really old, and really has had little to no renovation at all. And so there's some things that would need to be done in order to bring that part of our facility up to a standard. And then the other piece that's important, like I say, is this whole access, how you move people around, but this also helps you to see kind of the layers that go within the facility, and the, how that works. Important to this was the seating, so this is where we compared, it's like, what kind of seating do you get? And then also, the thing is that you want it to be able to have floor events, and you want it to have end-stage events. When you saw that picture, that's an end-stage event, right? The stage is on the end. So essentially, it allows you to be able to do a lot of different activities and events. There's fixed seating, there's square footage, all those comparisons were important as we went through this part of the study. We also looked at the new construction, square footage is in different areas, all the different things. So there's a lot that went into this one, where we were really digging in to be able to do it. Another important point that we did is we said, look, let's look at the, we'll have a geotechnical done, and what that does is that looks at the soils, and it's about the footings. And I've learned more, living here and doing my job here, about footings and making sure you have good ones than any other job ever. So this is a really important piece of this project, was to make sure, what's the right kind? If the right kind of soils are there, you can use a different kind of a footing, that can save you money. And so we wanted to know, are these good soils, bad soils, what's underneath here? That's what this did. The good news was, is that as that soil analysis was done, there was lower construction costs that were related to that. And so that really is, was something that helped us, so funding that study really was something that helped us to do that. Now, I've been talking all about these studies, so this is probably a good time to tell you, because other people ask me. So we've done the studies, how much did this all cost us to do all this, to get all these pieces? We, as a city, have spent two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, and that was for the three different studies that CSL did, the traffic study and the soil study. And thirty thousand of that was paid for by money that, when we renewed our contract with SMG at the time, now ASM Global, they had given the city money that we could spend in whatever way that we wanted. And so this was some funding, thirty thousand dollars of funding that we took from that, and so the taxpayer cost would have only been two hundred and nine thousand dollars. So that's what, that's what all of this cost, just to get you all this information. As we went through then this Two A planning, then the construction costs, so then you see the comparisons. And so by the time we got to that Hybrid Four, then we're starting to get in that mid-seventies, seventy million, seventy-five million, so. So this compared those costs, and that's a part of the documents. We also, in the, in the documents, it shows like, and this is done in all of the different pieces of the study, as we went along, and as we honed things and changed it a little bit, we always looked at, what's the number of events, event days, what can we do within the facilities? Because that also helps you to figure out what that costs are, that helps them to figure out what that return is in the, in that operating budget, you have to kind of look at this side of it too. And then an important feature of this has been the, also the estimated annual attendance, as well as the room nights. And so that also goes into figuring out those financials, as well as understanding the impact of how many people might stay here, what's our, and Dubuque is, is, you know, prides itself in our tourism, and we hope that when people come, if they come for an event, they stay over, maybe stay a weekend even. And so that goes into this study. And then, of course, those, there's those operating costs. So by the time we got here, the other piece that we did, because we had done a Scenario Four cost in the Phase Two. In the Phase Two A, we had to update that, because that was a cost from that time period. So all of these were equalized across both the construction costs, as well as the operating costs. So what you see here, at the time, was a current Five Flags deficit, that's every year, every year. What Scenario Four would be, Scenario Three and Four Hybrid. So obviously, we were trying to look at that and make sure that that was covered throughout the studies. Additionally, just because everybody likes to compare, it's important to have information, so included within the study were other facilities, and the kinds of operating costs, capacities, what, what it costs them to build it, because a lot of people are interested in that. And some of these, you'd say, well, they're not really a comparable facility. It's always very difficult to be able to compare, because you never know, and you'd have to study each one, because some are in metro areas, some serve just their own community, some serve a more regional, because that's the type of one we are, we not only serve Dubuque, but we also serve regional. But this does give you an idea to see how we are, and if we're in this ballpark of where other people are at. A piece of the studies was also to look at modern sponsorships, and I had the opportunity to go visit Sioux Falls, who has a newer facility. And that's one of the things that you really see that's very different from what we have. Because you have those wide-open spaces that I showed you as a part of the facility, there's lots of places where you can do these sponsorships, whether it's within the concessions areas, whether it's in the service parts of the areas, whether it's in the hallways, or like with some, it's a ribbon, or it's the, you know, center-hung scoreboards, or, you know, you name the different pieces of it, there's always those different areas that you can look at sponsorships to help your ongoing costs, and help continuing to lower that as you go along. Also, within the Two A study, we looked at those funding issues, so how, how do you fund this, and what are some possibilities? So these were some of the things that they looked at, and of course, we all know that you can do bonding to be able to do this, there's also the private sector that can be a part of it. You know, if there's ever, it's not on the list, but if there's ever grants, as you know, as a city, we're on it in a heartbeat, so those are the types of things. But then also, there, there's other things that you can look at, like ticket surcharges. It's not unusual for, if you build a new facility, that now, if you did, that when you bought your ticket, there would be, and if the show would normally be twenty dollars, it would be twenty-two dollars, or whatever that surcharge is. And that money would go to help defray the costs. We did look at the ticketed event parking, that depends upon, because we have, that's our parking, so it's kind of like, you don't want to take it out of one pocket and put it in the other, because it really didn't do you any good. So that's, those are some of the areas where it was suggested, but we can look at it, but, you know, that's the decisions that come to that. Other things to consider, like I said, in each of these, you consider what that operating subsidy is, or what the savings is year over year, and being able to continue to, if there's ways to engineer cost savings as you go along. I do want to remind everybody, we actually did the first one already. A lot of times, you know, you do a study, and you don't value it right, right away, but we did with this one, because we wanted to see if there was ways that we could still meet our goals, and be able to make an affordable project. So the Phase Two A study went to the City Council in November of nineteen, and it was a work session, and we did, we went through all this and more. So in each of these presentations, when the studies were presented, Bill was here, and he made the presentation to you on each of the studies. And all of those presentations are a part of your documents, if you wanted to look back to those. The Civic Center Commission then went on December seventeenth of twenty nineteen, and they said, we endorse Scenario Four Hybrid, and they recommended the City Council consider ballot language and setting a date. So on December sixth, because they sent that letter, you received and filed their recommendation, and then at that time, you referred to the City Attorney for ballot language in anticipation of a vote in September of twenty twenty. So the, then, at the February twenty twenty City Council meeting, you actually approved a resolution of the actual language, and that's what you see here, is the language of the vote. The Civic Center Commission, then, because, okay, think about the dates, that was in mid-February. One month later, we closed down most of the city, I know from the organizational perspective, right? And so are you going to go ahead with an election, not knowing? And it was interesting, in order to listen, to find your exact wording on that July sixth action, I listened, and it takes you back to how much uncertainty there was at the time, just in everything that was talked about at that meeting. And so the Civic Center Commission requested the City Council delay, you voted to postpone it, but of course, there had to be a specific action. The Commission then recommended to delay it till September of twenty-one, but then that's where you, as I referenced right in the beginning of this, said, we'd like to postpone it to not, a not certain date. So in other words, you did postpone it, but you didn't say when. And then to table it until January eighteenth of twenty twenty-two, thus bringing us here today. So if we would have... So if we would have met on the original presentation date, which thank you for rescheduling, that would have been the meeting, or, you know, right after that date. Just as an important thing to consider also in this, is you take city council action every year, and it's coming up here real soon to work on the budget. And so we do have a capital improvement budget. This five flag Civic Center has a tremendous amount of needs in order to be updating. So no matter what you decide to do, if we want to keep the facility open, there will be ongoing projects. I can also tell you that this is a project list that is in the current fiscal year. And you'll see fiscal year 22 is the first column. Fiscal year 24, we had made a decision a while back that no matter what, we're probably going to have to invest this $6 million. And we knew the timing of this election, so it's kind of, or potentially. So it's like, we are going to have to still have this building be able to be workable. And I can tell you, there's lots of things. It's definitely showing its age and it's kind of like a house that's about that old. It's just going to have a lot of surprises that happen to it. Additionally, if you look at fiscal year 26, what you see is that that year loads up. And what happens is, is that each year, there's only so much money within our budget, as you know. And so projects get kicked out. So that last year, 26, has a number of projects in it. What we really tried to look at was things that made sense, not knowing what would happen. So that's what you see here. But then also, like I say, there's always projects you can't afford. So essentially, these were projects that in fiscal year 22 to 26, were pulled out because we didn't have enough funding. We had other priority projects throughout the entire city, so these were here. The other thing that I'll tell you is that when you have that many projects, you don't make up a whole lot more. You're putting in the things that are imminent. And so it's not like this is the whole list. These are the imminent things that need done. There's continuing lists that will go on and on if we don't make some sort of substantial improvements within the facility. So that leads us to where we're at now. In fiscal year, or when you did your goal setting, you said, it's, you know, a top priority for us to figure out the direction. And so that's what we're here today, is that we just wanted to give you kind of a refresh. Because the other piece of this is that some of you have been at the table the entire time, from the start of all the studies till today. Some of you came in somewhere in the middle. So we wanted to make sure you all had the same general information and are able to ask any questions that you want. And so that's where we're at today. I have, throughout the studies, we've always updated. We have this quick link to get you to the studies. So on our city's website, there's pages that have web page, or have specific pages for the first study, the second study, the third study. If you want to see the traffic study, you can look it up. And then we try and give a general scenario of that. And I'm considering whether we should potentially take some of those packet information and also put that on, you know, those support materials so that they're easy to find. So if other people want to look at it, they sure have the opportunity to be able to do that. So with that, I'll end my presentation and just let, if there's questions you can need, like I say, Bill is on the line as our consultant. So some of those things are things he would be best answer. But also, we have HR here, if you have specific questions, that he may be the expert. Or Tyler Doherty as a Civic Center Chair, who can also try and answer your questions. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much, Marie. We appreciate it. It was a great walk down memory lane in a lot of ways, you know, thinking about all the steps that we've taken up to this point. All right, so here we are. We're, we're, we're bringing this back to the table, so I'll bring it to the table to see what questions and discussion we have. So I'll open it up. We have so many questions that we can't figure out which question to ask first.
Marie couldn't have been that thorough.
No, I know. Yes, Ms. Farber.
Thank you. First off, thank you very much for that update refreshment, and especially for myself. And I've only been here for the years, so this is refreshing to kind of have the refreshing and the historical context. I also wanted to thank Tim Hessler, who's here, and also the Dubuque Main Street Organization, Tony Foal, Dan Lo Bianco and their board for doing that concurrent study, which I also found very interesting and supportive of hybrid four A. So I wanted to reach out to them because I think it's great when we have that much participation in this kind of a study, which is enormous, to say the least. Couple of questions I had is about next steps. What are we, what are you envisioning? And if we were to bring this up to date because of all of the shortages and the delays in all of the infrastructure piece parts, as an example, what is it that it would take to bring this up to date? Because this is very informative, very detailed, but it's not necessarily current information with current pricing, looking at the economics of it, the opportunity cost, the opportunity won, et cetera.
You know, it, what, what would be helpful then essentially is from you. It's like, what are the specific pieces? What's the information that you need? Because we could try and guess what you want to kind of know. But just as you kind of pointed out, several different things as you, as you talked there, it's like if those are the pieces you want to know, then we'd be able to go back and say, okay, what would it take to update that? Right? What's the information? Or what's the depth of the study? Or what would it, what, what it would entail? So it would really take you as a body, being able to say, we really want this information, this information and this information, because that will be helpful for us making our decision of what we do.
Okay, on that one chart where you had the 55 million and then you broke it down by five million tranches, if you will, to the different parties. What, it would be interesting to re-engage, if you will, with the nonprofits and with the business community and with the potential sponsors to see how that could be part of the whole business plan, if you will. So that would also be some of the information that we would list for you. Because I really think that if we can get more engagement from the public and the nonprofits, if we can get the Dubuque Symphony Organization to go on to a major campaign to help raise funds for this, that that would alleviate the direct taxpayer burden, which I think would be a key success factor here.
And, and one of the things you'll have to consider if you decide that you want fundraising to be a part of that, is that how much do you want? Because you have to determine a dollar amount that you would put on the ballot, right? And so it's kind of, it would have to be typically, this is in Marie's mind, okay? You'd have to have those commitments, right? So let's say if it was, I'm just going to round a number, $70 million to do a project. If you wanted to fundraise five, you'd want to know, you got five, right? Because you're going to have to ask people for 65. So you're gonna, that's where you kind of have to time that out in order to know that between the two, you could have a full project.
And how do you suggest we go about that?
I'm not a fundraiser.
No, I mean, how do, what is the, I mean, this is a city municipality versus a business developer from the Dubuque Symphony Orchestra here. So how does one take that step? And maybe this is something for those that have been here longer, to execute on behalf of this project.
Mike, you want to take a crack at that?
I'll try. So one of the ways to do it is to establish the referendum amount at the full amount of the facility. Between now and whenever you set the date for the referendum, is you see if the people who are interested in this passing are willing to try to raise money to mitigate the amount you actually would have to spend of that authorization. And then when it came time to actually vote on the referendum, that committee, because remember, the city can't advocate for the referendum. We can provide information. So that committee and the city could provide information to the public to say, well, even though the referendum says $90 million, good news, we've raised $15 million. So when you vote yes, instead of a $90 million debt, it's going to be $75 million in debt. But I, it would be, I think, super challenging to do it the opposite way, which is to say, okay, we're going to raise money until whatever the last day is that you can actually set the amount. And then whatever you got, that's it. And so then we're going to, we're going to ask the public for the rest. And I think it's 45 days in advance of the referendum has, has to be established, something like that?
It's 46. There's a 46 day notice deadline to the county in order to meet the state code deadline for ballot language.
But in fact, somebody would have to be out there raising that money. And I assume that would be this pro group that, of citizens who are going to be put together by them, not by us, to advocate for passage of the referendum.
Okay, so it would be up to, for example, Dubuque Main Street and their group?
I'm not sure Dubuque Main Street was setting that up.
But I'm just saying as an example, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farber. Who's next?
Mr. Mayor?
Actually, Ms. Resel, is it okay?
I have a question, I guess, my guess is for Marie. If we were to put this on the ballot, and then how do we educate voters? I mean, some of these choices, for example, balancing the impact, taxpayer impact to, to build this versus the quality of life and all of those economic impacts that come with it. Only the voter can make those choices. How will we educate them so that they can make the best possible choice for themselves?
Right, so as Mike said, city manager, that we as a city can only educate. So kind of like tonight, where it's like, here's what's in the study, these are the facts, this is what we know. Many times, you know, myself or others, because I'm a city employee, can go and just, you know, here's the facts. And if people have questions, it's like you can answer the factual questions of the, and that's why these studies are important, because they give you those facts to be able to share, right? It's a fairly complex sort of a thing. But when they're, when they're voting, they're voting on something very specific. So that language you had there, and it would only come into play like if you were asked questions. So like if you were asked, let's say you said, we want to do four hybrid. And if somebody asked you, well, why didn't you do three? It's not an opinion, it's just that, well, the difference between three and four hybrid is this, right? And so, and then the other part is, the city council chose to put this one on the ballot, so this is the one you're voting on, right?
So it would probably be up to some outside groups who may be pro or, or against the referendum to do their, their work.
Right, so we would, we would be able to go and just in form of factual information as a city. So myself or others could do that. But if there was a vote yes committee, then people could invite them to their home or business or service club or, you know, whatever it is. And they could do that. But they might also ask the vote no, so that they could get both sides and then make a decision, right? So, you know, it's just kind of like in any referendum, there's always lots of information that people have to sift through, just like they sift through when they decide between you and the person running against you, right? It's this information that's out there. But obviously, we, we would provide, and that's why we even started early with the website, where it's like, here's the studies from the beginning, even when the first one got done. If you wanted to see it, it's there, right? And there's a lot of times where I've done that, where if somebody asks me a question, it's like, if you go here, it's on this page. Or, you know, you kind of try and refer them to the right information, so from a factual standpoint.
And I apologize for interjecting here, but one of the attachments in the multitude of them for the agenda tonight is a memo that I did, I can't believe this, but back in November of 2018, related to the, the boundaries and parameters related to the council setting the item for a referendum. And it included both the, the law and the things that can and can't be done. It was kind of an FAQ document of sorts. As I count down, I think it's
Probably about the middle.
I don't know, it's like number 20. But it does, the way it is worded is staff memo dated 11/1/18 from me regarding referendum questions. So in that document, I went over what city council members could do as a member of the nonprofit boards. Because, for example, you, you all sit on a number of them. So I outlined that. I outlined what you can do in your individual capacity, what you can do as a body. And then provided some code provisions related to, for example, use of public funds and things of that nature and advocacy as members of the body and things of that nature. So that one, if anybody has any questions on that, or you, you think that it, you know, there's some updating that needs done, please let me know.
Thank you.
Ms. Resel, you have anything further before? No, okay. Mr. Resnick, you're up.
Thank you. So much great information here, brings back a lot of memories. A couple of things. You mentioned that the studies result in facts. And a lot of times you talked about estimates, they're all estimates. So the studies really result in a lot of estimates, too. And one of the questions that the citizen had was the accuracy of the estimate. So I was going to ask the CSL gentleman, who did such a great job when he was here, to maybe self-grade himself, self-grade his company on the estimates. And to be fair, he gave us an estimate as far as, we think this is, you know, a 70% chance of being right, or those kind of things. But sometimes the estimates don't go well and communities pay the price. And so I was, if he could ask, if I could ask the gentleman on Zoom, if he could perhaps talk about the challenges, the successes that he's had and, and then some of the times that he perhaps that it didn't go well and why that happened and that type of thing. Could he give us a, kind of an overview, please?
Sure, Bill. Go ahead.
Great, thank you. Good evening, council member Resnick, mayor, council. It's a trip down memory lane as well. It's been a few years since I've been in Dubuque, so can everybody hear me okay?
We sure can, Bill. Thank you.
Great. Good, well, I appreciate the question. It's something that gets circulated in the press quite a bit in this day and age with technology and articles that stick out on the internet and they get recycled over and over and over again. And there, there certainly are, for all, all the major consultants within our industry, a number of articles of critics who have attempted to cherry pick different types of so-called evidence to discredit our studies and our firm and, and the like. So what, what I'll say simply is this, that every community, there are critics and, and there are some easy pickings out there on the internet to try to validate some of their opinions or their stances with respect to this. What I can say is, I've been in this industry, doing this with CSL for 26 years. My company has been around for 30 years. And certainly, we've got a long list of hundreds, if not thousands, of different clients and markets throughout all of North America that we've done work for that value our, our consultation and our advisory services. And we pride ourselves in being accurate, as accurate as we, as you can be by looking into a crystal ball. I mean, obviously, nobody anticipated the pandemic, nobody anticipated 9/11 and the like. So there are many events that, that are just not able to be predicted. Likewise, for many of the projects that critics tend to focus on in terms of evidence that CSL's methodology was flawed or was inaccurate in certain cases, there's always a story to tell with respect to that in terms of in terms of, you know, explaining why there's a dissonance between the original projections that were done oftentimes years in advance to those in terms of what were realized. And I would say in terms of our consulting practice, we have been more accurate with our projects than the vast majority of them. You know, for some of the critics that highlight some high-profile cases that, that maybe the, the estimates or the projections were not in alignment with what ended up happening, and some critics that may say that they've never seen a negative recommendation come out of CSL or other consulting firms, I strongly disagree with that. To be honest with you, many of the, the recommendations that we forward to clients that are a negative feasibility assessment or something that recommends not to proceed with a project based on insufficient evidence with the analysis, never get publicized. So those final reports never get released. They never, they never exit the draft mode in many of those cases. So, so the fact that they're not out there on, on the internet and in the public domain does not correlate to us never coming out and saying negative things about projects or recommending against it. So that's really the first thing. The second thing would be with many projects that haven't met our, our projections, when they become realized, there are some very fundamental and material differences with what the end product that was delivered to the market was relative to what we projected or recommended. You know, a, a, you know, a perfect example of that was a project I did years ago, a feasibility study for a new convention center in McAllen, Texas. And in that particular case, the recommendations were clear in terms of the size of the product that was recommended, the market demand, the market support. But we also said that you needed a headquarters hotel that had to go in at the exact same time as that convention center project. We also recommended a particular site, and we prioritized a list of potential sites for that project. And the project ended up getting built for political reasons in an area that was the least preferred site that we found. And it also was built twice as large as what we recommended, and it was built without a headquarters hotel. So they'd been struggling as we probably could have predicted going into that. So there's lots of stories that could be told with all that. I would say that there's probably about a quarter or a fifth of the projects that we study where there's clearly not a feasible project that will come out and recommend that. Many clients don't opt to invest the money for a feasibility study, which can cost up to $50,000 per study if there's not sufficient evidence on the ground at a grassroots level that some project is needed in the community. So therefore, it's already biased with respect to what, what an ultimate recommendation might be. In terms of projections, I would say that we are one of the most conservative in terms of our projections. In fact, the, the Main Street organization that retained the, the study that was mentioned earlier tonight to do more or less a peer review of our work, came out in, in support of all of our primary recommendations. They added some additional layers with, with the funding analysis and the funding recommendations. But they also said that our economic impact projections and some of our other projections were conservative. And so that's what we aim for. Particularly with economic impact projections, our conservative estimates as opposed to overprojecting, because that can really be low-hanging fruit for critics to come out and say that you're, you know, vastly projecting aggressively on, on the economic impact side. So, so, you know, we certainly stand by our reputation and we've got a long list of clients that continue to go to us, just like, like the city of Dubuque has, for repeated studies over the years because they value our, our analysis, our approach, our methodology and our recommendations.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that, that strong answer. And I like it that we haven't, instead of just saying that we have estimates, we can say we have conservative estimates. And that does help with, with people. I noticed that the, in 1976, it was approved and the country was just crazy bicentennial. And we were, it's so much enthusiasm where I lived and I'm sure in Dubuque. And so that, that always helps, that kind of confidence, that kind of enthusiasm for the community, for the, for the country. You know, so, so it's nice to, to build that. I, I tell you, my support for this referendum comes from the 100% vote by the Civic Center Commission to put this out. And they're really getting out there and paying attention to people and listening and talking to people. That's great. My concern is that, you know, the equitable use of Five Flags. It, I mean, honestly, there is a gain versus cost for some people to say, I do not use this facility. I don't understand why we're doing this. I go maybe once or twice and the restaurant people who, you know, I'm not, you know, it's, it's for the other people to make money and it doesn't have anything to do with me. It's just costing. So that's a, that's a case to be made for the folks, you know, that, who, who would like to, to talk about Five Flags in a positive way. The equitable, equitable use, it's not, if we're just going to say it's great for downtown, you know, that type of thing, we need to talk to people and say, you know, this is why we need to support it. The other thing that concerns me is using the date of a referendum to help one side or the other. And that's what I've been, you know, hearing, that we talk about, you know, setting a date for referendum. And, and some people think that setting a date one place or the other would help their side. And, you know, you have a special election, there's a smaller number of highly motivated voters. In your general election, larger number of generally motivated voters. And so that, that I, I hope we don't do that. Try to figure out what is best for one side or the other, whatever side you're on. I, again, I appreciate, I don't, we're not going to take any votes tonight, I understand. Or maybe just give some direction. I'm not sure how far we can go tonight. But it really all started with your wonderful wrap-up. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you, Mr. Resnick. You know?
I didn't say anything yet, but I, nope.
Happy to go now. Mr. Sprank is pointing at you, so I was just curious.
I got a slew of questions, so.
You want to go first, Mr. Sprank?
Sure. I can go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Marie. That was a very good and lengthy update, but I had forgotten as well as how long this has been in discussion. Coming onto council, when I came onto council was like, oh, it's been in the works for a while, it seems. So thank you. I had asked a slew of questions before, and I guess probably I could start with Mr. Krueger's. My question is, a couple of the questions are, is I was always looking at the surrounding cities that were doing similar projects at the same time. And I saw that La Crosse was mentioned, that they were doing a project. They were starting it right as COVID was starting. And so was the Correville project. Did any of those go ahead? And do we have any idea what those costs were for those two projects? Because it would, because they were similar sized projects, so.
I, Bill might know more about La Crosse because I don't know that one. I do know that Correville went ahead and was opened. And they were supposed to open just as, you know, COVID hit. And so, you know, that was a difficulty for them because usually you have this big grand opening and that sort of thing. But I do know a lot of activities are now happening within that facility. So, you know, actual operations and how they've rebounded, I, I'm not as aware of that.
I wasn't so concerned about the rebounding. I was concerned mainly cost.
Oh, sure.
Because it's mainly the cost.
Yeah.
Because there's been so many price increases, because I work in construction. That's another one of my bigger questions, is do we have an idea of updated cost estimates?
Yeah. And so we have not done any updates of, like, so what we wanted to bring today is this is what we have.
Okay.
And that's where, because that's where we need your guidance. Do you want specific, like just certain scenario cost updates? You know, what's, what's the particular cost updates you want? Right? So those are things that you would have to outline as a, as a voting group, what you'd like to see us do.
Thank you.
Did you get your questions answered there?
Uh, no, but I got more, but I'll come back. I can wait. I can let other folks go.
I, I want to stick with you for a second. You had the question about the, the costs of the, the two, the two arenas from Correville and La Crosse. Do you want to, should we go to Mr. Krueger and see if he has an answer or if anybody?
If he has an idea, yeah.
Yeah, sure, Bill. If you know anything.
Maybe he does, maybe he doesn't.
Yeah. Tell us.
Sure. Thank you. I'll interject here again. As Marie mentioned, the Correville did move forward. La Crosse Center did complete their expansion. Apparently, December 2021 is when they completed it. So it's, it's recently opened. I don't have a current construction cost for those two particular projects, but obviously it's something I could, I could look into very easily to, to get updated with that. You know, my, my suggestion would be, I, I think it's very astute to at least refresh the construction cost numbers, given all the dramatic changes in the industry with, with regard to the pandemic. And as, as was mentioned, you know, certainly with all the supply chain bottlenecks that the construction industry has been experiencing along with every other industry in the economy right now, it would be, it would be smart to update that. You know, for instance, there's different cost estimating firms that we've teamed with or we've put clients in touch with over the years. I did, in anticipation of this question, I did reach out to them and try to get a ballpark cost and timing for how quickly that could be turned around, should the city ask for that. So I think we're looking at, you know, in the realm of about $10,000 to $15,000 in, in a few weeks to be able to, to get a refreshed number on the construction cost for, for a particular scenario if the city's interested.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Krueger. Appreciate that. All right. You have anything else, Mr. Sprank?
Yeah, I guess I can go down my list. Karina, this would be a question for you. Could the referendum be put on the November 20, the November ballot for this year?
No, it cannot. We are restricted by state code to very specific dates. And so in 2022, the only options were March 1 and September 13. We cannot meet the 46-day ballot deadline for March 1. So the only possible date in 2022 is September 13. And this, I have a memo outlining these dates. It's also included in the materials. But I went ahead and provided the three dates that were options in 2023 as well. And those are March 7, 2023, September 12, 2023, and then November 7 is an option, but in 2023.
Okay. All right. And then this is probably a question for you, Mike. If we did go, if this did happen, would this affect our bond rating?
I don't think so. I don't see any reason why it would. I, I can check on that further, but I don't know why it would.
And is there a chance that we could talk about raising the sales tax, like a percentage to help pay for some of this?
It's not legal. The city already has a one-cent local option sales tax, and that's the maximum you can do.
Okay. Okay. All right. All right. Let's see. I know I had one more that I wanted to think about. And it sounds like for sure, if, either way, Marie, you had a slide that showed it's about if, about cost, if we have to move for, if we don't move forward on anything, either way, we still have to do capital improvements. So it looks like for sure we're talking about at least 70, 70,000 and then 6 million. Either way, that would have, that, that will have to happen regardless if we don't move forward. So, okay. Do we know if those are still accurate numbers, or do you think those have moved some?
Well, actually, we had that conversation during our, you know, as we've been reviewing to prepare to, to bring forward to you. The $6 million of then is not the $6 million of now. And so, you know, it's all in how it balances within the capital improvement. So as I told Mike, if, if we were to do the 6 million, there would be certain things likely that would drop out because we'd have to prioritize, because that 6 million will not go as far now as it did before.
Okay.
There is one thing I did forget to mention, though, in that there was, and you made council action, there was some ARPA funding, the Rescue Plan Act funding, that was set aside for some projects at Five Flags. So that was something that obviously none of us budgeted for, but there are certain projects that was outlined in the ARPA funding for Five Flags. So that would help a little bit with some of this, to take care of a few things. But it, it doesn't really kind of change that $6 million figure. It's just one thing I forgot to mention.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That'll be it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep. Mr. Jones, did you have anything you want to say yet, or you?
Well, I'm in a pretty simple position, and that is that my commitment in 2017, 2018, 2019, and I think 2020, was that our job is to define what the project could be and take it to referendum and ask the citizens if they want us to do it, plain and simple. So I think the next step is, the next steps are absolutely update the numbers, hire somebody to do that for us. Set the date for the referendum, I think for the September date, 2022, because people are tired of waiting to decide, in my estimation. People have some Five Flags conversation fatigue, that they're, they're tired of hearing about it and they want to go vote and get it over with. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but I think it's a real thing. And, and then we go from there. And I agree with the, the city manager's take, if there's going to be a capital campaign from the private sector to try and defray some of the costs, I think that becomes part of the vote yes groups' campaign. That, okay, here's the number on the referendum, but we've raised, we plan to raise this amount to lower that number. But the only way to do the referendum is with the full numbers so that if people vote yes, you can build it. Because that's what you told them you're going to do if they vote yes. You don't want to get, put yourself in a situation where, oh, we're going to build it, but this money didn't come through that we were counting on. So I, I think we're, I think we're cocked and loaded. It's time to go to referendum and time to, time to quit talking about, time to start doing about it. And the first step in doing about it is get those numbers updated. Second, and even simultaneously, so that we can set the referendum date and work on the language as soon as we get the numbers. That's mine.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Jones? Yeah, Ms. Farber?
I have two small questions. One is for Bill. Is, based on COVID and everything that's not happened between 20 and now, 2020 and 2022, how do you believe or think that market demand has changed in terms of attending these kinds of performances or concerts or events in indoor facilities? And what the appetite would be for in-town versus out-of-town to, for this? If that's changed, or how much it's changed, I should say?
Sure. Thank you for the question, council member. You know, it's, you know, the, the quick answer is it's different all over the country. I mean, there, there's, you know, I, I've been traveling for the last year now. Things are opening up, of course, and more clients are getting back to some of the work that my company gets involved with. And, you know, I see vastly different situations in every market. And, you know, I haven't been back to Dubuque in a few years, so I, I really can't comment on how the conditions on, on the ground would be that might affect attendance in Dubuque based on that right now. But, but I know that buildings across the country are opening up and, you know, there's evidence in lots of markets that are showing a thirst for attending entertainment and sports and, and other types of gatherings like that. So some markets are still relatively closed up and that are, they're kind of under a slow opening scenario still. Other markets are, particularly those in the South are going gangbusters, just like, you know, they're outperforming their 2019 numbers in, in certain markets. So, you know, a lot has changed, and I guess I would defer to H.R. Cook. I'm sure that he can really give you some real, on-the-ground kind of anecdotal evidence about what he's seeing in Dubuque and within the industry and, and conversation with promoters and the like. But, but, you know, there are some, some changes. You know, every building, and ASM Global's at the forefront of this in terms of rethinking the customer experience and, and rethinking what type of safety protections and protocols need to be put in place. And, and I'm sure he's been doing all that in Dubuque at the Five Flags Center. But, you know, in, in terms of the long-term demand, you know, the projections that we had in our feasibility study with regard to the event levels, the event mix, the attendance, the financial performance, the economic impacts, there aren't any major red flags out there relative to what's happening and what would be within the realistic timeframe of a project in Dubuque that, that overly concerns me right now in terms of having to go back and rethink and reanalyze. to go back and rethink and reanalyze all those numbers. I think the important low hanging fruit that rightly so you're honing in on right now, which is we need to make sure that we understand what, what the up-to-date construction costs would be, because that's the, the most realistic thing in the short term that, that's going to be a concern in Dubuque.
Okay, thank you very much. And then one more quick question for Tyler regarding ticket fees. Is that, is there a possibility to increase the ticket fee in support of the Five Flags?
Thank you. Could you, I guess, define what you mean by ticket fees at the actual event?
At the actual event or from Travel Dubuque as well? If there's anything Travel Dubuque had thought was part of the initial discussion? Is there anything that Travel Dubuque can help with the funding or no?
I think from a marketing campaign to educate the general public, I think it's something that we would definitely be involved in. As far as ticket prices, I think that would probably be a question for H.R., not myself. While we host events there, it's all on the event promoter then on what they want to do at the gate and how they distribute that then with the, with the facility. But I think our, our organization would be 100% involved with the education process.
Okay, thank you.
H.R., if you don't mind, I, I wouldn't mind hearing your take on some of the, the questions that Ms. Farber has presented here, if you're prepared to answer those.
Yes. Good evening, H.R. Cook, General Manager, ASM Global, Five Flags Center. To answer the ticketing question, we're currently at $3 for a facility fee. We fully anticipate, should we move forward with this project, to go to four with that dollar dedicated to offsetting the cost wherever the city council would like to, to present those. To answer, to kind of piggyback a little bit on Bill's comments regarding how our industry's coming back, I did give a, a report several months ago regarding how we were coming back as far as the, the Five Flags Center. We were able to stay, we were only closed a couple of months. We were able to open up a lot sooner than a lot of the buildings in the United States. And it really was a testament to the public coming into Dubuque from Illinois, Wisconsin, Minnesota, Nebraska, that they were looking for entertainment, they were looking towards Dubuque for that entertainment. It wasn't necessarily the acts that were happening at Five Flags Center, but that definitely added to the overnight stays. And we've been talking to the Julian Hotel, Grand River Center, the Grand Harbor and the Holiday Inn. And constantly we see these results coming back from our events that we've marketed to out of that 90 mile radius, a lot of heads and beds, you know, a lot of overnight stays. So that, again, is another advantage that Dubuque has that a lot of communities don't, is that we already have that infrastructure of museums, casinos, restaurants, everything already in place. They're just looking for an excuse to come here for the weekend.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, H.R. I think that's all we have for now. So a couple of things that I'm hearing as a summary here, and then I do have a couple of questions, I think, for you, Marie. First of all, I, I'm hearing a general agreement that we need to update our, our costs and, and know what the, what this would cost if we were to ask the voters and put this on the ballot, you know, what this needs to be. The, the, the second piece to that is the ballot initiative itself and how we want to move forward with that. So I think that's a question that we do need to address directly tonight as well. Before we do, though, I, I want, I was wondering if you could give us a reminder, what happens if, you know, we do all this and we put it on the ballot, voters say no? What does that scenario look like for us as a, as a city? I mean, because I know we've had a little bit of that discussion before.
Sure. It really comes back to you as well, right? So, you know, different cities do different things based upon what happens, what they've heard, what went on, those kinds of things. What I can tell you is that no matter what, we're going to, if we want to keep Five Flags open, we're going to have to put capital investments in that building. And part of those investments are, you know, even, even if it was voted for it, we still want to keep it operating up until the point that you stop in order to be able to do it. Because if you think about it, you'd have a vote, then you have to go out and select an architect and you have to get them on board, and then you have to do all these different things to get it ready, to bid it out, before you even start construction. So the facility can keep going all that time. So you have that in effect. Well, you need to keep your building working during that time. You'll make smart decisions, but yet if the roof's leaking, you got to fix it, right? Or whatever it so happens to be. And just like anything, it could just die tomorrow and you have to fix it. Any kind of equipment has that as well. So no matter what, we would have to continue, if you want to continue Five Flags as an operation of ours and as that asset for our community, you're going to have to continue to put some assets towards that, some dollars, in order to be able to keep it functional. Then you'd have to decide, you know, it's, you hit the crossroads again and go, did I hear enough to make another decision or should we go this direction or whatever? I, I don't think there's a way to tell you anything beyond like what that next step is till you walk through and finish your first step, right?
Sure.
Unless Mike has a different answer to that.
Not really. Yeah. Well, thank you. Okay. Aside from an updated cost estimate, which is a pretty clear need right now, is there anything else that you are thinking you would need more direction from us on? I mean, the, the, right now, like I just said, the, the ballot itself, you know, putting it on the ballot, getting an updated cost estimate first. Anything else you would ask from us or things that you would think we might need to recommend at this time?
Obviously, that cost is a really important one. Once we get that, then obviously there'll have to be discussion because then there'll be all the same questions we had, you know, what's that cost to the taxpayer, all those other kinds of things. And so we'd have to walk through those steps again. I think probably the biggest thing, and I haven't heard, you know, there's, there's questions in the community, the question really also goes to you is, have you heard questions that it's like, those are things we didn't have. We don't have this information in the study. We've never gone there and gotten that for people. And some topics are ones that it's difficult to actually find the answer, right? People want concrete, but as Bill said earlier, depends on, you know, there's a lot of times where it's depending factors. And so I think it's, it's more of, I don't have specifics. That cost factor, I think, starts to drive another conversation. Cost factor may lead you to, we also need this, right? And if so, because of the timeframe that Bill said, the good news is, is that's a fairly short timeframe to bring that forward for you. I have not heard of a lot of other information that, that people have said, what's the answer to that? Like if they ask me a question, I can pretty much for a lot of it, go back into those studies and be able to bring that forward. Now, some people would say, you know, that's a, you know, it was done in 2018 or whatever, right? And that's before and that sort of thing. And so one of the things maybe is just to have Bill codify what he kind of just said, right? That it's like these, these tables are pretty much, you know, they still hold true, right? And for him to be able to do that for us, especially on those pieces that people ask about a lot, right? So that may be something that's a good thing to do because otherwise, because then it's in a, in a report or a letter or whatever, versus just, you know, us virtually talking about it tonight.
Okay. Thank you. So let's, let's talk about the, the cost, the updated cost estimate first then. I mean, I think a question then that I, that I heard you ask is, for what scenario? So are we talking about all scenarios? Are we talking about just the scenario that we were originally going to put on the ballot back in 2020? I, I'd open the table up for some thoughts on that.
Mr. Mayor, that is, thank you. That is the scenario that was unanimously recommended by the Civic Service, Civic Center Commission. So I would say that that's the one we need to do.
Okay. I'm seeing heads nodding generally. Okay. So still then the scenario for hybrid scenario that we were talking about before. And I, I guess what I'm hearing is a cost estimate as soon as we can have it. You know, if, if a few weeks is the possibility, that's great. I know that it could, I mean, it's probably going to require a vote of ours in some way on an agenda, I'm guessing, to be able to put that forward. So that's going to delay that a little bit.
Correct. There has, there would have to be a resolution with a language that would be on the ballot and would set the date for the ballot. And I did some rough counting here and we all know I'm not good at math, but the 46 day deadline is approximately the last week of July.
So that you're saying?
You are looking at September. So I just looked for the 2022 date. I could provide the 46 days for the others as well. And I would ensure with the elections office that I have the right 46 day for each of those. So I could provide that at the same time so that you could consider all of the 2022 and 2023 dates.
So the latest time by which we could put this on the ballot would be the end of July, give or take.
Correct.
So we have some time to be able to work with here, but still we'd want to move pretty quickly, as fast as we can. Yeah, Mr. Jones?
I think the, the detailed question we were looking for in Brad's question was, does, will we, do you have purchase authority right now to spend $10,000 in updating those numbers? Or do you need to, to put that on a future agenda for us?
Well, it'll end up appearing in one of the budget amendments, but we would, we could just move ahead now to do, do it and get it to you.
Actually, I mean, we do have, we carried forward some funding to be able to, not knowing what you'd want, but I figured that so out of the last fiscal year, we did carry forward some funding that was for whatever study or information you needed. So we do have the money budgeted, Mike. So with that, then I would get a proposal from Bill so that we actually had the, you know, what you asked for in it. So then can you sign it and it'd just be under signed agreements? So essentially, as whenever, as long as that's, yes.
Yes. Mike has signature authority for that.
So essentially, as soon as I got it from him, then we could work to execute that and then have them start.
Great. Yeah, yeah, Mike.
I'm not a spokesperson for the committee that hopefully is going to be formed to try and get this passed, but they're going to need as much time as they can possibly get. So if you want to have it in September, you'd want to make a pretty expeditious decision.
Yeah. I think, you know, that's another thing that's on my mind and, and if anybody else has a comment on this, but one of the things that does concern me is, you know, I, I hear Mr. Jones' concern that we, we've been talking about this for a long time and we would really like to move forward. But at the same time, for the sake of a community our size doing something as big as this, I think it's important that we take the time that we need to get the best information so we can make the best decision possible and, and give people enough time to have the, the discussion as a community, you know? Because as you said, we can educate as a city, but we can't advocate once we decide to put this on the ballot. So those folks that want to advocate for or against this idea need the time to have that discussion. And rather than rush this just to make sure that we get it done because we were talking about it in 2017, it's, it's a new era and I think we need to take that seriously. So just a thought on, of mine at least to, to say that, yeah, let's move now. It sounds like we can to be able to get these updated cost numbers, but at the same time, let's, let's take the time to have the discussion so we can do this well. That would be what I would suggest. But we, that is a discussion that'll come back to us again. I mean, to be able to decide when we put this on the ballot based on the cost estimate. So I think the question for tonight that we really need an answer, it sounds to me like you've got the answer you need right now. So is there anything further that we would need to discuss before we close this out? Yeah, Mr. Resnick?
Well, Mr. Mayor, in the spirit of '76, I want to ask you, what if the voters say yes? What are the next steps? Do we close down for a little bit? Is there a scenario? What can we tell citizens who are getting excited maybe and say, you know what, I was feeling a little bit down about this, but now I'm getting excited. Spirit of '76 is coming over me too. What, what could we, what could we look forward to next steps after an approval of the referendum?
Right. Well, so within your big packet of information, there's actually one that's called a timeline. And if you look at it, it talks about, okay, and it had dates, obviously, that were relative to the last vote, but you could extrapolate in whatever way you wanted to, right? But it, there's bond issue planning, setting bond hearing, holding bond hearings, bond purchases and sale dates and all the things that go with bonding. You all have gone through that before. And then once that bond closes, then you do an RFP for professional services. So you do that. You go through design development, you'd start bidding, then you'd have negotiations and contracts. And obviously, this is a big project. It'd be kind of in that B branch scale, right? Where there's a lot of different moving parts that go with it. You would have then, once you get all your contracts and insurance and everything in, that's when you finally start demolition. And so you do demolition, new construction, and then of course you have punch list and training time. It's a new building. Everybody's got to get ready for it. They got to kind of do the kind of soft opening sorts of things. You open the building and so as you do that, that's what this timeframe does. And so this timeframe went from a vote, and that would have been September 8 of 20, to a building opening in September of '24. So a couple of years is, you know? And that, that's not knowing, obviously, the market right now, right? So there's supply chain things and over that next year or so, it's like what happens, right? Does some of that get better or whether that makes your construction take a little bit longer, right? So anyway, within your documents, there's actually a chart that kind of shows that because we had put that together because a lot of people kind of don't think about there's so many things you have to go through. There's just a certain timeframe, that's just all the bonding and that takes a certain timeframe to be able to do it even after a vote.
Thank you very much.
All right. Well, with that, thank you very much, Marie. We really appreciate you walking us through all this again and restarting this discussion after we've taken so much time off of it. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kruger, for being on the line to, to help us out tonight. Thank you, Mr. Doherty, Mr. Cook as well, and everybody else who's been able to provide some input. So that'll close this out, but for us, I see we do have a closed session we need to have, so I will entertain a motion for that.
Mr. Mayor, would the council go into closed session to discuss purchase of real estate? Purchase or sale of real estate?
I can second that.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Jones and a second by Mr. Sprank. And for the record, the attorney the city council will consult with on the issues to be discussed in the closed session is City Attorney Krenna Brumwell. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
That motion passes 6-0. We are in closed session.